Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the something we have to assemble together as mayor and council and administration to discuss the affairs of this community. Father, we are grateful for the freedoms and many blessings that we enjoy as members of this community and this province and nation. We are grateful for the privilege that it is to assemble as we wish and desire to be able to carry out the wishes and desires of the citizens we are representing. We pray that we'll do so with a clear mind and a sound understanding of the things that we need to do in order to help this community progress and to be a place of refuge for the citizens in it. And we offer these sayings and ask for thy Spirit to attend us in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank you very much for the prayer, Councilor. We're going to call the meeting to order this ninth day of January 2018, first meeting of the year, and we welcome Corey MacAlcy for the challenge thirty-two. And we also have a former councillor there who is going to do a good job at representing our views. Thank you so much, councillor, former councillor. And we are very happy to have our MLA, Grant Hunter, who is going to be our delegation today. So thank you for coming. It was a pleasure to have met you the other day as mayors and reeves also. So we will adopt the agenda.
I have an addition.
Okay. What is the addition, councillor?
I'd like it under confidential, DVD labor. Labor, period, amen. We'll discuss it in camera.
Well, we need to decide if it is the place for it.
Anything to do with labor is in camera.
Should it have been discussed with administration?
No, but we need to discuss it.
All right. We need to adopt the agenda with the addition.
I move to adopt the agenda with additions.
Mayor, if I could just add one more item to the agenda.
Okay, what would it be, councillor?
Just no removal.
Okay, would you want to put it on the seven F?
Yes.
With those two additions, which need to adopt the agenda?
I'll move that way, adopt the agenda with the two additions.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so we have our MLA there, and Grant, you are welcome to come to the podium or come closer, whichever way you would like. And thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to visit us. It's much appreciated.
Maybe I could stay here if it's okay with you, Mayor, so that I can write notes. So with the election, municipal election, I thought it would be better to come out and meet the new councillors and mayors and reeves. So I wanted to make sure that I came to Carstens, or Mayor and Council meeting so that I could hear your views and what are concerns that you have here for the community. So with that, I have received two submissions for infrastructure needs or concerns. The hospital on Highway five will be submitted to the infrastructure. We'll see what they have to say in the budget coming up.
Interestingly enough, today we received a phone call who have a, I don't know, twenty-second of January, I believe. So I find it interesting because we were supposed to meet Minister Hoffman at the UMA and were declined at the last minute. And we sent a letter stating her really disappointment, and we just received a phone call saying that she would love to meet us.
Okay.
So we're not going to Edmonton, so it's expensive, so we will have a telephone conversation.
Are there any other concerns, issues that you'd like me to represent the town on in the coming session or before that?
The one concern I have is kind of along the lines of the mayor's discussion with Minister Hoffman, that it's been, it's consistent since they've been in power that we've never been able to meet with them at AUMA. And we always have been in the past, never been an issue. And it'd be nice if you could go back and say, hey, you know, we'd like to communicate with them at AUMA on a regular basis, like if we have concerns. And we're not the only one. I've talked with other councils, council members, and they're furious that it's happening to them too, and they're not getting the opportunity to meet with them. It's not, it's not right.
Yeah, no, I've heard that from other areas as well. So we have brought that up already before, and I don't know, you know, they have a majority of government and they get to march to their own drum, but I can continue to say that too. I have talked specifically to Sarah Hoffman about that. She's the deputy premier.
Deputy premier.
And it was specific to the environment minister, because it just seems like no one can get a hold of the environment minister. And so I talked to her about that. She said that she would look into it, but I haven't, I haven't heard anything back on the issue.
There is no doubt that the carbon taxes impacted our town and our finances. Last year, it cost us about $50,000 plus. And then with the pool that was generating revenue and now is negative, we have now to reimburse money. So it's definitely not helping us a heck of a lot. So we own our own electrical, but instead of having the pool that was generating money because of the changes that are made in a province, the way that electricity is going to be done with more renewable, I mean, I understand, but all that has an impact on small towns. And when you lose near $100,000 a year, that represents a significant amount of money that you have to make, make up from some other form of revenue or cutting somewhere, somewhere else in your budget. So I really don't know if they are really realizing the impact even on a small town like ours.
Have you projected what this 50% increase in the carbon taxes, would it be to your bottom line?
Jeff, you can maybe look at it a little bit more carefully, but I would say altogether we're talking, for us in this town, a loss of revenue of about $100,000.
So you're going to double what you lost last year?
Well, no, it's a, well, last year was $50,000 plus what we had to reimburse to the pool. And so altogether, we were near $100,000. I would imagine this year will be pretty close to the same amount. So those over a period of 10 years, you're talking a million dollars. It's not small potatoes to us.
Carbon tax in 2022 is supposed to go up as well, yeah?
But that's what I mean. So every time there is an increase, when you project it over 10 years, you're talking a significant amount of money that we could be using to put towards infrastructure somewhere.
Another question. How much validity are there to these rumors that are going around about a meat tax?
So Shannon Phillips sent out a tweet, that she said that she did send out, and so we're not sure who sent it out. But anyways, Shannon Phillips on her Twitter account sent out a tweet saying, "A New Year's resolution, one of the New Year's resolutions would be to eat less meat." So anyways, that was a slap in the face too, especially Lethbridge, and Lethbridge is right in the center of that industry, you know. So anyways, she's kind of backed away from that, but since that time, PETA came out with their, their take on it. They said that, you know, methane coming from cows causes global warming, and they said that we should transition away from that kind of, transition away from that eating meat cattle. So, look, it's, it's not something that is, Alberta provides something like 70 or 80% of all the meat for Canada and then exports substantial amounts. So we, we have a huge beef industry in Alberta. And Jason Kenny has gone after them on it, saying that it's unacceptable. Ministers should never say something like that. You can't go after the oil and gas and think that it's not going to affect Alberta. You can't go after agriculture and think it's not going to affect Alberta. And so, you know, she's taken some heat for that. But is there, is there any creeds to the idea that they are going to put a meat tax on for this? At this point, no.
Well, sometimes these are trial balloons, right? They throw these things out there for a reason.
Right now, it's not a fact, councillor.
Mr. Hunter, recently I listened to Jason Kenny on News 36, he's up by Vagerville, the boy minister. And did he ever say a mouthful when he said to the, to the premier, "This province was built by big diesel trucks, big diesel tractors, and diesel this and diesel that." And he says, "You can't avoid that. Why are we taxing them?" And, you know, I think we need to get down to that, because, yes, your industry, the diesel industry, we've got to do something with, with a tax on our, on our fuels. It's, it's killing us. And like I said, industry, our, our community, the diesels that we have in our community running our public works, we have a tremendous amount of diesel vehicles in our public works, so is Lethbridge and so forth. So we need to look at that tax on, on fuels and really take a serious look at it. And why are we spending so much money overseas when we could be developing our own, as far as I'm concerned, refineries?
Just to answer that question, Councillor Bingley, we've already said that we would scrap the tax.
I just want to reiterate my displeasure with the new constituency boundaries. Absolutely ridiculous. I've talked to you about this already, and I know there's nothing we can do about it, but it's absolutely cherry-mandering in my, my view.
Yeah, it's, it's an issue. If you remember when we were on council together, there was a change of boundary we rolled, and the letter we got back was, "We're playing the number."
Yeah.
When we're playing the numbers, we have to come up with so many numbers per writing. And as I say, it's a manipulation.
Well, that's, that's a good argument, Mayor, but the problem is, is that the present iteration of our, of our riding, Carstens, Tabor Warner, is around 42,000. After the changes, there'll be about 42,000 people in the Carstens six and a half. So they haven't changed in terms of numbers.
No.
There's no change.
It's a political game.
In fact, the Tabor Warner is around 42,000 as well. So I, I, the arguments, we've, we've tried to make them, it came through the House in the last session. We tried to stop the bill that, you know, we don't have a majority, so they went for...
Yeah. And the truth be known, when you have a new government, the boundary will change again.
Every eight years. Every eight years, it comes up for review.
Yeah.
So.
I think it would be appropriate to let Grant know about one of the initiatives that we're working on.
Yeah, I kind of spoke to him a bit, so go ahead.
Thanks.
No deal, Thunder.
No, I didn't. I just dropped a little bit and told him at council you would be able to advise him the idea.
So, Grant, you're familiar with the Eastern Alberta Trade Corridor?
Yep.
And it's our desire to create the same sort of thing in the western side of the province, a Western Alberta trade, travel, like tourism corridor. And obviously, one of the things that we would like to see to help this go forward is the hours of service and car wait extended to 24/7. By doing that, we believe we could divert a number of trucks traveling through Coots who ultimately go east just to come last, where they could go straight up from the I-15 through to Cowrie and Evinton. And the other aspect of that is that if you look at the numbers, last summer, Glacier National Park celebrated the fact that they had 3 million visitors there for the first time in their history. And we believe that there is an opportunity that's being lost there for us to get more tourism traffic coming from Glacier National Park into southern, southwestern Alberta. So I think if we had a 24/7 port and people weren't worried about getting back to their campfire and sanctuaries or wherever, and they could go anytime they wanted, I think it would drag some of those tourists across the border. And the third element to that is the fact that we have separated the traditional lands of the Blackfoot Confederacy for 150 years. If we had a 24-hour port, you'd join the members of the Blackfoot Confederacy for 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
It's a good angle.
We think so. There's also a carbon tax savings for the number of trucks that will be going an hour out of the, less, out of their way. And I'll work any other angle that the NDP or Liberals need to make this work.
So have you been able to talk with Glenn Motts? This is obviously a federal issue.
It's a federal issue. We haven't talked to him about it. I think he would be a little bit, I'm not sure how he would feel about it because he's from Medicine Hat, and they've been pushing that eastern corridor for a long, long time. I guess my response to you and to him would be, well, now you need to work equally as hard to make sure that happens on this side of the province.
Agreed.
Do you have one?
No.
Just to add to that, because our belief is, if we open up this border, what that will do for our community is help it to grow. We'll bring money into this community, we'll help it flourish, we'll bring jobs, we'll do all the things that we went out and told people we were going to try and do for them, right? I mean, that's our goal, that's your goal. We're politicians, our goal is to help our constituents. And by opening the border, it's going to help us to be able to do that. We're seeing it as a plus with the businesses and the money that it's going to bring in. And by having these things, we can clean up other areas of this town that we're struggling with. That's kind of where we're at.
So what do you need from me?
I would suggest, I guess, first of all, Grant, your thoughts, do you think that we're...
I talked to the mayor about this the other day, coming back from Mayors and Reeves. I think it's a great idea, any angle or any way we can try to bring more people this way, even in summer hours. I know that there's a couple times that I've been down to Kalispell, and we've had to change where we come through because the border was not open. I mean, I, I live here, but still, if it affects me, it's going to affect other people as well. So I love the idea, I think it's great. I think that the town or county, or town and county needs to put some signage where the cutoff going to Waterton is and kind of maybe do a little more selling of, of who we are in Carstens and what we have to offer here, so that they come up through that crossing versus going up the, up to the Waterton crossing.
Right. There are some statistics that I was made aware of in the last couple days that are interesting, the amount of southbound traffic versus northbound traffic. And it's significantly different. And I think it's because everybody knows they can get across, and then when it comes time to come back, well, if they think they're going to miss the border, they go through Roosevelt or they go through Coots.
Yeah.
And I, I think if, in answer to your question, if you were on board with this, and if your colleagues in the UCP caucus were on board with this, and then if there was, you know, some suggestions or things you could offer us in terms of lobbying the government of the day, I mean, obviously, I think we could get you and your fellow caucus members on board pretty easily.
Sure.
I have no idea what would happen with the NDP, but, I mean, it makes economic sense. The other aspect of this, Grant, is that if you really want to handle this point home, it's the fact that the province of British Columbia has 4.6 million people, and they have eight 24-hour crossings along the 49th parallel. Saskatchewan has 1.13 million people, they have two 24-hour crossings. Anatoga has 1.285 million people, and they have three 24-hour crossings. We have 4.2 million people, and we have one. I think the federal government owes it to us. They've long underserved this province for a long, long, long time. The fact that Alberta has the second largest GDP of any province in this country, and they need a better trade corridor, they need a more significant trade program.
Or alternate routes.
Yes.
I agree, 100%. Couldn't disagree anymore. I have no problems talking to Glenn Motts about that and advocating and seeing where he can go from that, from there.
I mean, we probably would have no problem as a mayor and council doing the same thing. Obviously, we want the county on board. We would love it if the chief and council were on board with us, and I think that's probably a pretty easy sell for them too.
I imagine that attacking this from multiple points is not a bad idea, and many people going after it is, you know, makes it more of a squeaky wheel.
I mean, one of the things that we've noticed is if you look along the trade corridor all the way up Highway two, those communities are thriving. We're just being selfish a little bit and saying, "We want that."
I think that maybe some outreach needs to be done to Montana as well, because the main highway there, they were there, but not so much with the crossings as well. So maybe being able to find out what they have in store for future development or crossings would be also important.
I think we need to reach out to the Montana Department of Transportation. I think we need to reach out to the Kalispell Chamber of Commerce too, because heaven knows Carstens lives in a flathead valley in the summertime, as does a lot of southern Alberta, and people can gather.
Yeah.
And so I think we have a number of points that we can make about why this is a good idea.
The other point is, I know that the NDP have been talking about diversifying the economy and, you know, being able to open up more points of entry is, is going to help in terms of tourism. As you say, 3 million people came to Waterton last year, so it's, I think there's some, there's some really good arguments to be made, and I think that they don't need to be made to a UCP government, I think they can be made to the NDP government just as, as strongly, just because of all the arguments that are, that can be brought forward. I have no problems doing that as well.
I must say, this idea is a very sharp, I'm going to say, and we thought it was a refreshing way of looking at the economic development that is one of his portfolio. And I thought there was a lot of meat there to be processed regarding that idea. I mean, we understand that Medicine Hat has taken about 10 years to come to where they are at. So it's a long-term project, but it needs to be started somewhere.
One of the problems that they have in Medicine Hat is that road, the access both from the, from both sides of the border, it's a terrible road. So it's not just the border crossing needs to be 24/7 there, it just, it needs to, they need to do some infrastructure and create their development as well there. Whereas we actually have pretty good...
And actually, the state of Montana has done quite a bit of work on the road all the way from Browning all the way to Wolf Creek.
That is, that actually is a fairly natural access point north because of how much is, how many people are going to Glacier.
Yes.
If they go over the pass, then they come down, they have to go quite a ways if they're going at night, which we don't really want to see them leaving, going east.
I mean, I think the struggle with Wild Horse and the southeastern part of the province, with all due respect to that part of the province, there is nothing but prairie dogs, snakes, and sagebrush there.
That's true.
We actually have a natural tourism corridor here, and I think it shouldn't take us 10 years to see this happen. It should happen fairly quickly simply because of the amount of potential for tourism going both ways.
It's kind of, it ties into what Councillor South is talking, is that our Southwest Economic Alliance meeting in the state of Montana has just received a settlement, and they're giving 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars to help to build up electrical vehicle generating stations, because they want this Glacier Park corridor through Waterton, they want it so that people can, those who've got, who have the electrical vehicles, they can have a quick recharging station. And so they're talking, using that money to build stations all the way along, right up into Alberta. So, I mean, it's just a natural thing that's, that's happening right now.
One other point, Grant, is that Jeff gave us all some information that Lethbridge is really trying to become a transportation hub. They want that because of north-south-east-west trade. We want to be supportive of that by having another trade corridor that feeds into their hub.
Back to your point, though, Councillor Barnes, I agree with everything you said, other than the quick, there's nothing quick about...
There's nothing quick about charging, I realize that.
Charging takes four, six hours or something like that.
Yeah, well, we can build a charging station and have them come and visit for a couple hours or so.
Yeah, yeah. It's kind of the, the idea. I know they have that in Fort McLeod.
Yes.
I've never seen anybody ever stop there because it just takes so long to charge. But the technology will probably increase, and you'll be able to charge your batteries quicker, and so, I think it's in the right, in the right direction for sure.
Are there any other questions you have or comment for Emily Hunter? If not, thank you very much for your...
Oh, I have one, real quick.
Go ahead.
Regarding access points on the highway out here, we've been talking about having a, another access point up here in the western industrial area of town, and we've been having a stalemate.
That's what we're talking about, that's Highway five.
Okay.
That's what we talked about, that's part of the infrastructure.
I just didn't hear the, our western industrial.
Yeah, it's in it.
Yeah.
So thank you very much, and happy to have somebody advocated for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rob.
All right, so we're going to carry on our work. We will have a break. There are some snacks for you that have been prepared. And at 7 o'clock, we will entertain our next delegation. So we will try to move as far as we can within the next hour. Okay? Let's try to see what we can do. So we have the minutes of December the 12th, 2017 that need to be approved.
I think we should approve the minutes.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the minutes?
Okay, it's not about the minutes, it's about all the motions that were made that were included.
Okay. Can, can we do one thing first? Let's approve the minute, and then we'll talk about that. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Thank you. So do you want to talk about the motions? Go ahead.
Okay. I'm just curious about the number of motions that we passed on November the 28th that were included in the minutes of that meeting, like 304, 305, 306, 309, 312, 316. Do we ever get, like, oh, let's follow up on these, report something that we can say we can refer to?
It's a very good question. It's a very good question. And that is normally done through Jeff in his administrative report. And if you want it done a different way, there was also ways, we done it in a past council where we had the different motions and we had the status of the work that had been done. So Jeff, maybe you can enlighten us.
On your devices, maybe we didn't go over this very well. You all have Wonderlist on there and you can follow the progress of every motion under that, so.
Maybe we need to learn to use it.
And give you the quick tutorial. So we set that up and what I do is I assign everybody and then you can see the notes and what's, if we've got things we've added and you can follow all those through, for sure.
Yeah, it's it.
Yeah, I'll show you through that a little bit before we go home tonight.
The only thing is, you don't want to kind of interject.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't, sometimes you've marked them complete, Councillor Brown did a few of those, she was marking all these complete for us. Because it's a big shared list.
It was my first day.
I know, we got fixed.
It's administration.
I'll show you how that goes.
What the administration is doing in delegations.
So it's just an observation platform, is what you're saying, eh?
That's right.
That's what it is. All right, thank you so much. And in general, Jeff always has something about the work that's happening in his report also. Am I correct, Jeff?
Try to, yeah.
Thank you. All right, let's go for the bylaws and policies right now. We had before the break, bylaw 1649C, electricity distribution bylaw amendment. And if you remember, we had to amend the amount that were allocated for the distribution.
The balancing pool.
The balancing pool, sorry. So we passed the first reading. Today, we can pass the second and third reading for that bylaw. Councillor Banbury?
I'll make a motion to allow second reading of bylaw 16.
49C.
Yeah, 1649C, electrical distribution bylaw.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
Mayor, I move to allow third and final reading.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. All right, let's look at bylaw 1618A, traffic safety bylaw amendment. This has two modifications in there. One, to disallow people to park on the oncoming traffic side. And the other is to have people who have RVs park, be allowed to park outside, starting, which is a date exactly, you change the date, so April, April 1st, is that what it is?
April 30th.
April 30th.
October 31st.
Okay, April 30th to October 31st, people will be allowed to have their rigs outside according to the bylaw. Okay?
Just a clarification.
Yes.
That means they'll be able to park it on the street without being hooked to a vehicle?
No.
No, that's.
That doesn't change. You still will need to have it hooked.
Thank you.
And you still will need not to have lines crossing the sidewalk.
Okay.
Because they are danger to people who are walking there and could trip on those lines. All right? So, all in favor? Thank you. We need the third reading on this one.
Make a motion, we do a third reading on this bylaw?
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. 6C, draft bylaw 1663, the Tourism and Economic Development Advisory Committee. Councillor Self, maybe you want to talk regarding this? You have, together with Alex, I would imagine, with this portfolio, do you want to address that a little bit?
Sure.
The intent of what you see that, that committee to do?
Previously, the Tourism and Economic Development Advisory Committee was created on an as-needed basis and it met rather frequently. And what, after having conversations with both Jeff and Alex and discussing what some of the things we want to accomplish as a council going forward, thought it would be expedient if we had a little more formal approach to this and we had an economic development advisory committee. I think you've got it all in your background, or consisting of that council member, someone from.
Administration.
Administration, yeah, and someone from the Chamber of Commerce and then three citizens at large.
From the town.
From the town.
Which is a change from the past, because in the past, we had the county represented.
So anyway, what we were thinking is that there are a number of initiatives that we want to carry forward, not the least of which is what we just discussed with our ally and another number of other things. And so we thought it would be better to have a more fulsome committee. So that's why we drafted this bylaw, to create the advisory committee. And I think it's all there, you know, kind of where the direction I'm going to go. Unless there's any questions?
I have a question for you. When I read this, I thought it's very well explanatory, it's good, I really appreciate the work that was put inside there. What I was wondering is, when you said that you would entertain points that might be of education or tourism-related or anything that might create an impetus in a town, is that something that you are thinking also in the line of events that happens in a town on a regular basis or is that something different? For example, I'm thinking of the power. The power is something that doesn't fall under any kind of committee. So is that something that you want to be part of that or not? The agridome has sometimes some element, but they have the agridome committee.
We think the agridome should stay with the ag society committee.
No, but that's what I'm saying. It's all right. Councillor Brown, don't take it personally. Councillor Self.
Agers.
So I just was, I just was wondering.
So, I'm not looking for any events and we're looking more just at things that we think will be a more permanent impetus for economic development in town.
Okay, so you're looking at something much broader. That's good, just wanted to know. When I saw that, I thought, okay, how small, oh, are you going?
We don't want to entertain, like, well, I wasn't, what are some of the things we target, like the marathons or the different things that they've done?
Yeah, the fun runs.
Yeah, fun and all that, I'm not.
So you want to leave that on the recreation of some sort?
Yeah.
Okay, fine, thank you. So what we need to do with this bylaw, if you are satisfied with the document, we could approve the first reading, but we could also approve a second and third because it has no particular impact on the citizens. Councillor Brown?
I would like to approve the first reading of bylaw 1663, Tourism and Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. So, council, it's up to you, second and third, if you want to do the.
I'd like to do the second reading of that bylaw.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. And now, as well, finish it.
I'll make a motion to allow third reading and final reading of policy, bylaw 1663, tourism and economic development.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. So that is done.
No, we need to, we need to have third reading because I was just allowed for third reading.
You're allowed for third, okay, sorry.
I move third reading of bylaw 1663, Tourism and Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Thank you. All in favor?
I have a quick question. I didn't notice any microphones out here, is there a reason?
There's no gallery.
I thought it was for the, I'm going to pick it up, I guess he picks it up here, eh?
All right. Okay, 6D, council policy B15-2, policy for budget process and timeline, we only need one motion to approve the small tweaking to that policy. You saw the tweaking is just to approve the budget for the year and a capital budget of that year and then the three and two following years and three and four following years for the capital.
That we change that policy as, for a minute?
Thank you. Questions? No? All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, that completes the section of bylaw and policy. So we now have other businesses to deal with and the first presentation will be done by administration under 7A, is the Infrastructure Master Plan presentation. It's a fairly comprehensive document. I read it, it's, there are a lot of recommendations, I had questions and maybe I will talk about the question later on, but I really think that Jeff needs to do the presentation first.
I did this to the previous council just before the election because this was finishing. I just wanted to give you a bit of an update of this document. This is the Infrastructure Master Plan, this is what you got in your package, it was obviously a very small synopsis. On your OneDrive under Council Orientation Material, this is there electronically, the whole deal. So if you want some interesting reading late one night, it's all there. It's a bit of a tough read electronically. Yeah, it is a bit of a tough read electronically, I'll admit that.
Well, then, no, that's also.
Yeah, there's some, Shem, can you, there we go, thank you. You have what I'm putting up on there also in your background. I just grabbed a few pages and I wanted to touch on a couple of things on each of those pages about why we have the document, what it's supposed to do, and then how it came about. And I know for some of you who are back, this is a bit redundant, you've heard this before. But back in 2009, the town did their first-ever Infrastructure Master Plan and AECom, the engineering firm, did that for us. Since that time, we've had two area structure plans approved and we've done a number of improvements in the previous Infrastructure Master Plan. And so we began, it was actually two years ago, to update the master plan. In short, it's an analysis of water, sewer, and storm and we added roads this time, that's a new one for this, this time. It's an assessment of their current condition and then it is a, a plan of their ultimate design. That's in a nutshell what the Infrastructure Master Plan does and it attempts to put a cost to that in today's dollars for budgeting purposes. And so it looks at, the executive summary starts with very brief summaries of, first of all, the, oh, I should back up a little bit. When we looked at area structure plans at full development, we use a population number of 6,900. So that number comes from taking all the area structure plans, so the town at its most dense, and what that population would look like, essentially, is where the number comes from. So when we look at water plant capacity, sewer plant capacity, those kind of things, we're looking at a build-out ultimately of 6,900 before there'd have to be actually capacity improvements made in major infrastructure, just to give you some reference points. So when, we were able to enhance the 2009 study quite a bit by doing a few, a few things that were a little better for analysis, and I'll get to some of those later, but the executive summary essentially hits on just a quick overview of raw water supply and treatment and distribution, sanitary sewer and storm. And gives just a brief overview of the methodology and how, what they went through, what they looked at, what they're using for, for example, per capita daily water use numbers. So that's a new number in this, in this study. So we were able to use some monitoring since 2009, actually from 2012 is when they used most of it, to come up with, you know, a good solid number of what everybody's using on average every day to plan for the future, plan for future developments, pipe sizing, all that stuff. The big thing the Infrastructure Master Plan looks at when it comes to water distribution as well is fire flows. So the ability in any part of town to fight a fire at a certain pressure of water at any given time, either when there's demand on the system, so at 6 o'clock in the evening when there's lots of people using water and you need fire flows, or at 3:00 in the morning when no one's using water and you need fire flow. So we've looked at that in this as well and I'll get to some of that a little bit later. On sanitary sewer, one of the improvements we had in this study is about four years ago, we bought flow meters that actually go in the sewer lines. They have a wire that goes up to a little cellphone transmitter and it transmits real-time data to Brandon on what the flow in that line is during what we call dry flow and wet flow. So when we're not getting any rain and when we're getting rain, frankly, is what that means. And so what we're able to do, as Brandon monitored different areas of town, different pipes over certain times, that we're able to build a little better idea and we have a little better knowledge of what those flows look like residentially and non-residentially in different times of day depending on the circumstance. So those have been really helpful for us, too, and that's a bit of an enhancement over the 2009 study as well. And we didn't change a lot, the storm sewer is relatively the same because we hadn't done a lot of work on it since the 2009, it's been relatively static, except that we added stormwater pond plans for the different area structure areas. So where we would have catchment areas in the east and the south and the west and those are more planned than they were. So those first few pages, this one, this one, and again, I don't expect you to be reading almost anything on the screen up there, is just giving the quick executive summary of each of those disciplines, we'll call them, water, sewer, and storm. And I'll get to the roads at the end of the, end of this. There's a couple pages in there called the servicing concepts. So it was just the scope of work in each of those that they did, I've kind of touched on a lot of that already. And then you get into some of these maps, which are really the more interesting thing to look at when you go through this document, is the mapping. So you get maps like this one, and again, I don't expect you can interpret anything on it, but this is a breakdown of the existing water distribution system by size of pipe. So it says on this block, it is a 150-millimeter pipe, or on this block, it is a 350-millimeter pipe. And again, when you have it electronically, feel free to zoom up a lot because you need to. But we now have this inventory and we had it in '09 as well, but this reflects all the changes since '09 of, in this case, for this map, this is the size of every pipe under every street and avenue and what its capacity is. And so that's a benefit for us. And then it gets into detail under each water sewer average. This is a chart that gives where they were determining what average per capita use of water is, water consumption in the community. We actually have, just as a point of interest, the town of Cartson has a higher per capita water consumption than most communities because we have, our lots are so much bigger. So when you factor in summer use for irrigation, it skews the overall per capita because we use so much for irrigation relative to, if you go to Lethbridge to Stone Ridge on the west side and you have a 40-foot lot. You know, you just don't have much to irrigate. So we have a little bit higher, the average is 553 liters per day, per person. So that's a number that we use when it comes to planning for water in the community.
Their business is a lot more.
Well, that one's a bit interesting because if you take Main Street, for example, their daily water consumption is rock bottom. It's so minimal because they have, say, one toilet and a sink, by and large. Or it gets skewed a bit by Southwest Concrete, for example, where they use a ton of water in their processing. So they don't tend to average too high because our, we have so much retail in the community, it skews it quite low on the non-residential side. I showed you the map of the pipes by size, this map, again, recognizing that you can't break out all the detail, but this is pipe by material. So is it cast iron, is it steel, is it PVC, is it asbestos cement, what's it made out of? And so what we use this one for predominantly is priority. And so what we use this one for predominantly is prioritizing replacement. So when you look at cast iron pipes and you look at those things that need to come out because they get smaller over time, right? Those cast iron pipes continually grow in on themselves and you lose capacity. So this is an example of another useful map where it's showing every water line by type. This one is, again, it's water lines by size, but it's with improvements. So if we implement everything in the Infrastructure Master Plan, what's it look like? And the reason they make these maps is they model them. So they run them through a modeling software that says, okay, if you do these improvements, what is my fire flows at this point in town? What is my fire flow at this point in town? Depen... comparable to what it is today. So I show this just to, to give you an idea. This map, well, it looks a little crazier. That's showing, now this is with improvements. There's another one in there that's without improvements, is showing fire pressures. So those kind of centrifugal, I won't call them circles, but centrifugal lines are showing how the pressure outside of the center of the town reduces as you get out towards the perimeter of the town with respect to the pressure of a fire hydrant and what's available for fire flow.
So where's the best place to move to?
Uh, let's see. I would move to...
My house is perfect.
Right by the mayor's house.
You'd be just on the southwest corner of the temple, it looks like. That's about the best one there.
I'm not too far away.
Yeah, so, so that seems to be about the center of the pressure point. I'm just guessing it's about right there somewhere. So those ones are about 230 liters per second for flow and pressure. Yeah, Counselor Court, yours isn't as robust, to be honest. So just make it burn slow. That's all we're saying. No, there's still, there's still lots of water there. I mean, you're still opening up a six-inch valve. You're still filling a lot of water. You just don't have the flow as some other areas of town do. So that's an example of a fire flow map. And if you go through the whole document, you can look at what it is currently today and then what that would, this is with improvements, what it would look like. Then we get into sanitary, whoops, sanitary sewer. This is simply a map of every manhole and sewer line in town and it's showing just simply material. It's based on what it is in material. And when you look at sanitary sewer, this is what I was talking about, doing flow curves. So this is how we're able to establish, again, on an average, what flow looks like. So for example, in the town of Carson, 8:00 AM would be peak flow for sanitary sewer. And then it goes down from there through the day and you'll get a little bit of an uptick again, starting at about 5:00 o'clock. Everyone's getting home from school and work and it comes up a little bit again, then it drops down substantially in the morning hours. And then residential, really, at 8:00, it goes up to about the 1, stays pretty consistent until 6:00. And then it drops back down again. So these are just things we've been able to develop since 2009 to help us plan. This is a very interesting chart here. This one is called Sanitary Sewer System Dry Weather Flows and it maps it as a percentage of the utilization of capacity of the sewer line. So that's one where thankfully, and I know you can't tell it on here, these are all the first category, the black one, and there aren't any outside of that. So in dry weather flows, we don't have any sewer lines that are getting up to their capacity in dry weather flows. That's what it's telling us. Now, if you look at the wet weather flows, it's a different story. Right? We start to see them getting 120, 30, 40% of capacity in wet weather flows. So it gives us an idea where we can focus for capacity issues. And also, there's always an underlying issue when you have that much difference in wet weather. How are you getting all that rainwater into your sanitary system? We don't want to treat rainwater. We don't want to take water that falls from the sky, pump it, treat it, and pump it again. That's a, you know, that's a cost and something we don't want to do. So you start looking for the infiltration points. And when we can flow monitor, Brandon's able to get a better look and say, man, this pipe specifically has tremendous surge when it rains. Why? And you can kind of work yourself back up the pipe a little bit and start to investigate that.
Jeff, along that line, have we, have we done a lot of investigation of how many people are dumping their gutters into the main sewer?
So we have not gone into homes to investigate that, no. We know it's a problem because we have a surge in wet weather. The first thing we started with that we just did, the bulk of finished lot here in 2017 actually, was sealing old manholes. So back in the day, they would build manholes with brick. That's how they were built. They were mortar and brick. Well, you can imagine 50 years later, when it rains and that water goes in the ground, it just seeps into the manholes like crazy. It finds the path of least resistance and it pours in. And so we've been sealing all those manholes up and spraying them to seal them and doing things like that. Our new regulations and permit regulations don't allow you to put your rainwater, your sun pumps into the sanitary anymore. That's not allowed. It still happens. And so we try and deal with it on a one-off basis, but the other things that we can, we need to do better there. We have a few areas, for example, I can think of a couple where you would have a manhole, a sanitary manhole, sanitary sewer manhole and a ditch, and that ditch filled with water when it rains. So what happens? It all drains down to the manhole. So we have to work on the elevation changes for the manhole. Lift the manhole up or grade the ditch differently, work on drainage in the ditch. So we, we can identify a few things like that and work on those. Helps us pinpoint that a little bit. We had a really bad one in Moses Lake that when there was a lake there, there was a sanitary manhole underneath that whole lake. And so we were able to lift that and get it above and induce an elevation thing. So this helps us identify that a little bit, Counselor.
Jeff, when we talk about the sun pump program, when you go into the, into our main drains.
Yep.
Did, did we not have a program where we, they...
We still do.
We still do have a program.
So we issued two, there's a program that if, what do we call it? Something diversion, I forget now, but...
I, 10 years ago, I applied for it.
Sure.
And it, you just applied for it? You paid the plumber and they came in and they put a jackknife in and they made sure that it was no longer going into my sewer, that it popped it out of the house and down the driveway.
So we did two of those this year. Normally in the older homes, you find where they're just simply running weeping tile into a pit in the house and then they run six feet of pipe and pump it into the floor drain in the house, right? It, it is obviously legitimate, easiest thing to do.
Do people know about it?
Um, we seem to still get applications. The plumbers all know about it. It's really where it comes from, right? It's normally a referral from the plumber saying,
That's how I got it.
I can do this for you. By the way, call Bart. He'll come check out your place and I can get you a bit of a review.
So I have a question on, on that because I've had people ask me about that.
Yep.
So the town will pay for...
We pay up to $1,000, depending on the cost of the project, yeah. And so Bart goes and looks at it before and then after and can see that the the stormwater has been diverted from the sanitary system.
Yeah.
And will help with some of it.
I know there are some homes in town that their basements do flood and they have a floor drain and it's going down in the floor drain and it would be much better if it was pumped out before it got to that point.
The two we did this year were quite older homes. There were, there were new owners of older homes that were trying to take care of that problem, so.
Is it, is it town or is it government?
No, it's us. It's the town. Yeah, in the budget, I think we have I think we only put about three projects a year, 3,000, maybe four. Not all of them are the total 1,000, but it's, that's up to the max. So that, for example, is just capacity during dry weather flow. This is the one where we start to consider future servicing. So what happens? Where is the east area structure plan going to be serviced from? Where's the west area structure plan? This, 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 this. Where are we going to run trump mains to service those areas? So we're using these maps as well to look at where to tie in and those kind of things. Very straightforward on that one. This one is the existing storm system. So it shows the underground piping infrastructure. These blue lines, they call them the oh, what is their little name there? They're catchment delineations. So if a drop of rain falls in that area, which way is it going? Where's it going to find itself? What ditch or, or which direction is it going to flow based on elevations? So we look at the existing storm system, what's happening there? Future storm system again, where is west area going? There's a, for example, a planned storm pond. There's a planned storm pond. There's one. There's one. There's one. There's one. So it places in these catchment areas where the best place to potentially put a future storm pond is.
They changed some of those locations in the last few years. When I built my house, they talked about storm retention.
Correct. You were going to have one as a neighbor.
Yes.
Yeah, but now it's not there anymore.
No, it's going to, if I understand correctly, Counselor Court, and I made your own, but I think I'm right here. The plan is actually to pipe that into the wet pond developments.
Okay.
That that development's going to go under the ditch. It's going to, it's going to come through a storm system, go through the ditch and daylight over there. I believe is the plan.
That would make sense.
So again, just a mapping of the existing storm system and then future storm systems. And then this year, we incorporated streets. So what happened is we sent somebody with a camera up and down every street and avenue. And I don't have it in this one, but if you look through the street portion of the whole plan, you'll see they put these little, what do we want to call them? Nodes, I think they call them, where at the beginning of, say, First Avenue, it has a little dot and an arrow and then it, it, it has measurements every so often. So when you look at the map and say, oh, at 200 feet on First Avenue, this was identified, you, they just use that so you can map it. And actually, we can overlay it on Google Earth. So we can actually overlay the pictures onto Google Earth to see exactly what they were referring to. Because it was all geo-located when they did the pictures and everything. This is showing, and I showed this to the previous council, this one is, for example, to show wheelchair ramp locations and conditions. So green dots are good-conditioned wheelchair ramps. Red dots are, there isn't one. And yellow dots are, they need improvement or they need an update.
It's rather remarkable how much has been done in our town.
There's been a lot done over the last 10 years. Yeah, a lot.
We, we had decided when we had those plans over there to have it more senior-friendly and more accessible for people with difficulty. And I think we have pretty much succeeded.
Yep, so that came around, did quite a few of those. And then things were, this is one page of a long spreadsheet. I didn't put the whole thing in it, but what it did is it identified, for example, if I take First Street East, it has 197 meters. There was four deficiencies identified and the repair cost would be about $3,500 as an example. And that went for pages and pages and then culminated in two different summary tables. One of them, we broke it down by the type of issue. So we said, okay, and I'll just grab one here. You have settling concrete. And that costs on the average $250 per incident to fix. There was 52 incidents found totaling $13,000 to fix them all. If you look at some of the big ones here, so asphalt deterioration, $1,900 a meter to fix. There was 973 meters identified for 1.8 million. And so on. So it just, it went through, again, identifying every little thing. And then we also broke it down by concern. So minor defects, there was 172, major 209, failures of some type, 150. Potential safety hazard with failure, 101, and then things we consider a hazard, 34. And the 34 of those actually are pretty minor because the total bill to fix them all is 51 grand. So we broke it down.
Sorry, is that what you then focus on?
So that would be how we could prioritize the next year's, so we, we budget a, for example, a general $30,000 for street improvements, for example.
Right.
So the way we could prioritize what will be done is Brandon will look at that and say, you know, we can probably knock off 12 of those this year and here's where they are and we can start focusing on that, right? So we broke it down by type and then by what we're calling rating, Counselor.
Jeff, when we talk about the asphalt deterioration or whatever, how about the edges of the asphalt where it meets the curb? Because I know it's on Third Avenue, right down past Cretinian and so forth. You get a lot of undermining of the water. That's going to take away your road bed. How do we fix that?
You've seen, in fact, if you look right here, you can see that we've tried tarring some of those big cracks. It tends to come up after a while.
Right.
There's not a great, aside from cutting out a huge patch and re-asphalting, but now you're getting a little bit more than that $22 a meter, whatever it would be, right? So we're just going to have to look at those case by case. And, and the other thing to mention with asphalt deterioration is of course, we acknowledge it, but we also look at what's the condition of the infrastructure underneath it. So if we have one that's minor deteriorated, but the, we figure there's five, six, eight years left in the water lines underneath it. It's probably going to wait. It's going to get patched just because we're going to have to tear it up just a few years later anyway. So it's going to get pushed. So asphalt deterioration is a bit of a combination of what's underneath it and what's on top. And, and how do they come together?
Now, every once in a while, we get some MSI extra funding to help out with some of these jobs, don't we? Like, get some special grants every once in a while?
There may be a building Canada or something specific that will come around and, and we're ready now with costs and with priorities, right? That's the other thing what these plans do for you, is they make you relatively grant-ready. You know, if something came along for a transportation grant and, and enhanced federal gas tax fund, for example, we'd be pretty quick to say, well, we could address our rating four and fives, whoops, sorry, wrong button. If we could get 400 grand, we could, we could identify all of those 135 items in the grant right now that they've been evaluated, they've been prioritized and they've been costed. So that puts us in a good situation for those things when they come along.
That's what I was referring to.
Yep.
Now, Jeff, we had a company in town going around filling up all the cracks and stuff like that. Is it advantageous to us to consider doing a slurry all the way down the road?
I just don't know, Counselor. It's not my area. You know, we, we assume that they're exercising best practice. That's, that's the assumption. I just couldn't speak to it very well.
I know, I know in the States that that's the way they correct a lot of their cracks and problems with their old ways. They, they run an actual slurry
Right.
boom, right down the street.
Right.
Cover the whole thing?
Yep. Right from curb to curb.
Yeah.
It's a big...
We did something somewhat similar to that on Sixth Street West about five years ago. That condition was really poor and so they came in and basically did a bit of a top dressing where they put an oil and then some sand. I don't know if it held up that well. I mean, six isn't great. It's, it's holding together, but it's not great.
Can I ask you something? In this report, there are also some recommendations that are made in the beginning pages.
Correct.
And those recommendations are based on future needs that the town may need to start to look at. For example, the twinning of the sewer line under Lick Creek. So do you want to help counsel understand a little bit? How do you approach such recommendations? Because that is a very significant amount of money. We're talking millions of dollars. So we don't obviously have the funding available. So how do we deal with those recommendations?
So I think the best example, if I understand the question correctly, I think the best example is how we've been using the Resiliency Fund. So this is a temporary fund. It was introduced for a temporary amount of time. And we go, we, we applied to it for the intake repair money that we got. We've applied to it for the stormwater pumps and the twinning project. We'll see if we get it or not. But we're able to be ready with projects. So we're, we're project-ready. We're not having to go find an engineer to see what might work and do a preliminary design. So what you'll see through the project is, well, in fact, the next slide, my last slide, is this. And if you can read any of that, congratulations, because I can't. But it's, these, so there's about four pages of these really extensive spreadsheets saying, okay, we've looked at all this stuff. Here's everything in a priority basis in a spreadsheet. Now, there are some anomalies through the report that aren't in that spreadsheet. So for example, the sewer twinning. And the reason why it's not in the spreadsheet is that we gave the engineer guidelines for how much they could budget for each water sewer and storm sewer every year that was consistent with what we've been budgeting in the past. And to pull one of those projects, it blew you completely out of the water in the one year. So we've kept them as kind of, when there's an opportunity to find funding, we're going to try and find special funding. Otherwise, this can continue on in kind of a nice progressive fashion in our annual maintenance, annual budget that we can, we know we can probably stand, that we know we have the money for. So they've grouped these together, as you see, in kind of five, four to $500,000 increments annually. Because for water, for example, or sewer, that's what we can kind of spend annually. We've been able to do that. And so that's how it's broken down. It's not just arbitrary. It's prioritized. I mean, you can argue the priority because those are going to change year to year based on circumstances and environmental conditions and a water maintenance is going to break when the frost comes out of the ground that we didn't anticipate. It's going to move. But it's, it's in the best priority based on either condition or, they actually, they graded it by sorry, if I looked at it here. A deterioration or condition and then cost. So that's how we've dealt with some of those bigger anomaly projects versus the annual maintenance. maintenance.
Mr. Benjy.
Jeff, this master plan has only been done because of you. I will tell you that.
Ah.
You implemented this.
You have to be bad.
And you got this, you know, it's ready for, like you said, any grants that come along when you look at master plan and so forth. So my kudos to you for putting this, there's a lot of work in here.
Yeah, thankfully, I didn't do almost any of it, so that was even better.
The direction.
But I will say, Council made a shift, I think, three years ago.
That's something we wanted to see.
Where you started putting some engineering money aside every year so that we could be more grant-ready. Because what was happening, and it was a frustration, like, early on, was, a resiliency grant would be announced, or Building Canada would be announced, and we'd say, what should we apply for? I don't know. Well, what would be good? Well, this would be good. How do we get a preliminary design done? How do we know what the cost is? And we just were never ready to apply for stuff that came out, and some of that stuff has incredibly short turnarounds. You might get notice for grant, and you have four weeks, three weeks, and there's a deadline. So, while this existed in '09, and I can't take any credit for that, because I started in '08, we've been able to get it up to date and be more grant-ready. So some of those big projects in there, like the storm pumps, the twinning, Ninth Avenue booster stations, there's actually already preliminary design done on those. It's not in here, but I can email Albert, who did Albert Takeo Tabera, and say, hey, shoot me the preliminary design on that, and it's ready. It's sitting there designed, here's how it will go in, here's how it's been costed. So yes, we're much more grant-ready than we have in the past.
Which is important.
Yeah.
Because...
Yeah.
Has Albert, yeah, worked on the golf course, the remediation on the river there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was a 14-page synopsis of a 280-page document. It's on your Onedrives. I have about six copies of this, if you want to come borrow one. If that makes you feel a little better about doing that, you're welcome to come borrow one. And it's something that will come up here probably near the end of your term again to look at incorporating all the changes, spending a little bit of money to get it up to date again.
Okay. Thank you so much. So that, the idea to have the next review would be in...
We're looking at a major one every five.
Five years.
I mean, we went between, we went eight this time.
So, at the end of this council, will be the right time to start maintaining it.
I think we should be looking at another, you know, pretty significant, and it also depends a bit on how aggressive we can be on the improvements, right?
Right.
As long as we've got some funding, as long as we can continue to do things, then it would necessitate a change. And we'll just have to look at it.
Good. Thank you so much for that presentation. I hope, Counsel, that you now understand a little bit more what's happening with our infrastructure in town. All right, we're going to go on the 7B, Council Request for Direction. Counselor, former Counselor Creed is here, so he's going to be interested by that one. Museum tree replacement. If you remember, before we had the arborists come and give us a little bit of an update on the life and of our trees, we, as a council, had decided that maybe it was time to plant some replacement trees on the front of the museum. Now, we have designated the tree as heritage tree, and we have received the information that if we look after the tree properly on a regular basis, the tree could have 40 to 50 years' extra life in them, and keep them therefore as heritage trees. So, in that sense, there is a conflict between what we've done, which is to create a heritage tree plaque, and to have Counsel put a motion forward to replace those trees. So, what do you want to do? Replace the tree, keep the heritage tree?
Well, if these trees have been to last for another 40 to 50 years, why are we even discussing this?
Well, because we have a motion put...
What is the cost of maintaining them as opposed to putting up a new tree?
Because that's a very good question. It doesn't come cheap, but it's doable. It costs about $4,000 every time we have a treatment applied to those three. And it has to be done pretty well every two years.
I don't know yet.
Fairly regularly. That was what was floating around, but we are tentatively waiting to see what happens now that they had one first application done to curb the problem. So we shall see.
Well, that's a good point. Let's just wait and see. There's no sense in dealing with this.
Exactly. In other words, the option to revert the direction of Council, that's what you need, right? Okay. So, somebody put a motion forward to preserve the heritage tree and not to replant.
I'd love to make that motion. It's a valid path, it's your time.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Next problem, a little bit of a problem we have, is 7B2, the Carthong mural. As you have noticed, looking at the mural, there is, there are a problem with the stucco. The stucco is starting to peel off, and therefore, the mural is not as hard as it should be. Because of that, we had asked that we could really digitize the image of that mural, because we had possibly the value of having that mural as a digital image print, and applied to the wall as a digitized image and frame it. Except that the company that was going to do it is no longer willing to entertain this option. So, this leaves us with option number two, which is to repair the stucco, and we have the permission of the people who are on the other side of the wall to work on that wall if needed, and to have a local artist repaint and refinish the surface. And that is probably the wisest move at this point. When there is greater damage done to that image, we do have the digitized image and can then decide what to do.
And where is this money coming from? To give the repairs and the repainting?
We're not talking much money. Jeff, you would have a contingency fund somewhere.
Jeff, Mark's budget or something adds very little, is what we're thinking.
We're not talking thousands of dollars. We're talking less than a thousand.
This would involve our heritage, courthouse museum, historical society, and also communities and women. Have we got any input from those two individuals, those two committees?
What we had as a council was to fix that image and to restore it to the best of our abilities by putting something on the top of it, or by restoring it the way it is originally. So, no, Counselor, I do not believe that we have had any input, because we felt for less than a thousand dollars, we could fix the problem.
I agree that we do whatever we gotta do to fix it at the least amount of money we had to spend to try to get it done.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Question? All in favor? Thank you very much.
I forgot. I wanted to mention something that, and I should explain the form that was on. I submitted those two requests for direction. The previous form I used was a much shorter one. And then circumstances or things have changed, and I'm looking for a different direction on it. You won't see it a lot, but I, the union councils haven't seen that yet, and I wanted to mention that beforehand.
Yeah.
Just something I'll use when I'm saying, circumstances are a little different, and I just want a little bit of direction on where we should go with it. So you may see that, I don't know, a few times a year.
Yeah. Thank you very much. All right. The next one, 7C, is the budget for the authority.
Chief Mountain.
Chief Mountain. Actually, personally, I was quite pleased with that budget. I think it's amazingly well-done budget, Counselor Salk.
I just commented on that. At least they now have money reserved, or it should be reserved, rather than a big slush fund called the...
Right. It's much more transparent and accountable to the detail of the operation.
They had a big slush fund called an appreciation account.
Yeah.
Now they've actually got earmarked for things that they are going to spend the money on, so I think it's a huge step forward.
I saw that they have reserved, well, want to spend about $40,000 to buy a skid steer to...
Yeah.
Their whole machine is kaput.
That's kind of in their annual replacement, I don't know if you want it. It's in their replacement plan every year. They use those skid steers on their trucks to move the garbage. They gotta be replaced regularly.
What I was impressed with is that the requisition total amount is not exceeding what it was last year. And I thought, wow, that's a breath of fresh air. So, that is good. So thank you so much.
And Kevin, and you'd refer to as an SAO, has been a huge benefit for that organization.
Yeah. Honestly, I looked at it and I thought, wow, good job. I think I thought that we appreciated the format and the transparency that is in that budget.
I will tell them that.
Thank you. 7D, Trade Corridor Briefing. So, we talked a little bit about this idea with Emily Hunter and Counselor Salk. This is 100% your idea, so if you want to elaborate, or if you want to try to see what's the next step?
Well, actually, you know, I can't take current, well, can't take current for any of the steps that have been put forward. That's all Alex's work, but...
Well, thank you to Alex, too. Administration should be thankful for that.
I guess my question is, does anyone have any further items? I mean, obviously, there's some things that we're gonna want to look at, and Alex has touched on it, participating neighboring communities. Obviously, we want the county on board. We would like the Blood Tribe on board. We could talk to McGrath, we could talk to other communities, but we want them all on board with this. And that information that you sent out, Jeff, regarding the whole trade and, you know, what the Economic Development, Lesbridge is looking at.
Yeah.
I think this feeds right into that, and we should probably work with them and talk to them and say, this is what we want to see happen. And so, I know the mayor suggested that perhaps we go to Economic Development, Lesbridge, and I don't know how that, how that looks or how that works, you know, whether we just ask and we meet with you, or whatever. And then obviously, we've now presented it to our MLA. I think it behooves us to have a meeting with Glenn Motts, our MP.
Should we, as a first step, then, maybe present a little bit what's in our document, what it is, and send it to Glenn Motts as a first step? Would you like us to go that route?
All right. Or should we get people on board? Should we talk it up in the communities first, so that when we send the information to him, we say, and here's what your voters in these communities are thinking of it?
It's a chicken and an egg, and an egg and a chicken.
Interestingly enough, on Facebook, the last couple of days, this thing has been popping up. It started with Tim Hortons and that, and 2,200 people.
Yeah, right.
And all of a sudden, they're saying, well, why have the cars gone? Then we're talking trade corridor, so it's out there already.
Yeah. People are really interested, yeah.
Very opinionated on it.
All right, so...
Why do we have Tim Hortons?
Trade routes.
Okay. Jeff, do you want to help us a little bit here?
Well, I just wanted to put this in front of you, because the motion at the last meeting was to begin exploration.
Right.
And in the absence of an advisory committee up until this point, there was really no one to balance off if this is the right direction. What I think can happen now is we can segue this into that advisory committee, they can get their heads together, they can start doing a little legwork, and then Counselor Salk can simply report back. My big thing was if there's no objection to the direction it looks like it's going, then the way we go now that we have a bylaw for an advisory committee as well.
Okay.
Just a comment, too, and that's, I don't know if you got a chance to look at this? It's a fairly, you know, in-depth document.
I haven't seen it.
And it was, it was the link that was in your...
Oh, okay.
Anyway, this was a business case that was put forward by the Bear Pod Development Corporation in Montana, and the Palisir Economic Partnership in Alberta. If you read this document, and I've made notes on this, and I'm gonna talk to Alex about it, this is perfect. Everything they talk about here, it's like, well, this is exactly why we need to have a 24-hour boarding car lane.
Yeah. It's on work.
So, would your committee then develop the business case? Would that's something that you would see yourself doing? Such committee. Who would have the passion enough and the energy sufficient to support you?
Every day, we need to have a motion to formulate a treatment.
He has, we have been done it.
Economic Development.
That's what it is.
That's what it is.
And this is gonna be a separate one from economic development?
No, no, no. That's part of it. That's, that would be a project of that committee.
So, Jeff, is there a chance we could meet, like, immediately with the chamber and say, hey, you know, this is what we've done, and this is what we're looking at, so we want a member from the chamber? And then, I don't know, I would look for anybody's names to be put forward to help with this.
Well, do you need to put your head together and come up his name and...
With the chamber, I actually talked to Cindy yesterday on some other things, and I mentioned to her that I anticipated this was gonna, this bylaw would pass tonight, and then we'd be sending them a letter this week to assign someone from their committee to be represented here. So she's anticipating a letter from us to have someone sign that committee.
Okay. So, having said that, again, what about the county? Have you mentioned this to Murray?
I've talked about it all, yeah.
Okay, so here is where the question that I posed earlier on. In the past, we had a member of the county on that committee, and at this point, you don't. So do you want a member of the, at large, or you don't?
Well, I think the someone from the committee can simply present it to Council or send them a, for their support. I don't know that we...
So you don't want them sitting there?
I'll be honest with you, Mayor, and I'm gonna put this in a bit accurate rate, Jeff. Basically, what we decided is, don't round up the usual suspects, let's think outside the box and get some, just get through your...
I hear you. I hear you. It's good. So, you guys can work on that, and you can bring those names, if you could bring those names forward for next council meeting within two weeks, it would be the ideal for you. That would start to bring you forward a little bit.
Should we, can we, like, we know of names, can we give them to you?
What, the best way, if you want to panel everything, to Jeff, and Jeff then do that, yeah, Jeff would be the best person to panel those names, okay?
I'm excited about this.
Thank you. Well, I think you have touched on something that could see some momentum.
Yeah, I hope so.
Thank you. All right. 7E, Brownlee Emergency Trend Conference. So, right now, we have Counselor Brown, Counselor Benjy, Counselor Barnes, Counselor... Drew, and Councillor Self that are going. I will not be going, and Councillor Coe?
I travel the county a lot the last little while, so if these town councillors can bring back anything, that'd be great for me.
Okay, yeah, and there, there is always a document that is given to, to each participant. So, now...
Bring back a couple left through.
Here is, here is another thing. Have you guys organized your rights? How are you going?
I think we're all just going at the same angle. I, I can't speak for Councillor Brown.
I'll probably be driving, but I can sit in the car. I'll take my van, who, I'm more than happy to take everybody with me if you wanna come.
Well, then, we're not paying mileage for everyone, it would just make sense that we all go together.
Well, you know, that is the idea.
I think we all decide. I think we all decide at the morning of.
Are you gonna get up and leave at five o'clock?
Well, that's the way we used to do it.
I can sleep just as well in my own bed as in a hotel bed, it's uncomfortable.
Yeah. All right, so, that's a direction, that's the wisest way to do it, but...
Did those of you who mentioned, did you get your registration confirmation via email?
Yes.
Okay, I was hoping everybody got it and everything's good.
I think so.
So, was it Councillor Banbury that was driving, or what? Or are we taking the town car?
Are you driving, Richard? You're gonna drive, I'll just go with you.
Okay, let me see, you got your suburbanite?
I can put a...
I'm not going under the track.
Okay, hold it. Oh, come on. I'll settle this one.
All right.
If he takes, if he takes his suburbanite...
We're all in.
We're all in.
You would squeak in easier than sitting in front. Well, then, he can sit in the middle, and I'll sit in the back like any good teenager, and sleep all the way up and by.
All right. I'm glad you have it settled.
I have tons of room, with one leg room.
Good. All right, so you guys decide on where you're going.
So everybody morning of?
Yeah.
And you've all got your registrations that are going? If you don't have those, call me.
I don't recall seeing, so...
Okay, check your email on that device, your, your town one, see if it came through.
Okay. All right. Seven, if you have problem with a registration, please contact Geoff ASAP. Seven F, snow removal. All right, councillor, I know we are talking Christmas, and we are talking misery, and we are talking everybody being on holiday. All right.
The mayor's government, I don't have to say anything.
Okay. I know, I know, we, we spoke about a broken machine, and Geoff came to the rescue, thank goodness, and hired all the staff and created a mini miracle in a hurry, but add your to send.
I, I just need some background information. How did we get to where we were? That's, I guess...
A scheduling issue, I suppose.
So, I would, and I mentioned this in my email, I think everything was probably twenty-four hours later than it needed to be, is how I felt about it. I just felt for some reason there was a real delay out of the gates, and it was partially a reluctance on our guys' part to bring in outside contractors. And we're trying to be cost-sensitive, they're expensive, trying to make sure we weren't doing it with a whole bunch of costs for, I mean, it wasn't a minor snowfall, but it wasn't a catastrophic one either, right? So, I think it was really just a hesitancy to bring in third parties, was the big piece of it. And I think if we would've done what we did on that Friday, the day before, everybody would've been relatively content. We just, in my opinion, we got one day behind where we needed to be on that snowfall. Now, I may be wrong, that's just how I kind of interpreted it. And so, we brought in South West Concrete Bolton trucks for hauling, and in, they have a big blade on the front of their loader for piling the road.
I must say, I very much appreciated a Saturday before Christmas, all the stalls on Main Street were clean. And that was really a bonus. I appreciated that very much.
I recognize that was kind of your first big snowfalls in the council, so the phone starts to ring and, and those things start to happen.
Five minutes after.
Well, and, and that's the other issue, we, I wanna be careful saying this, but we've set a bit of a standard for snow removal that probably isn't one terribly sustainable, it's just expensive. There's a part of me that wants to say, no, we're just not gonna do residential streets anymore. We'll do priority ones in commercial, like almost everyone else in Canada. But we don't. We, we move it, we actually move it off of every street. Now, sometimes that's delayed, and we're fortunate, we have sixty-foot streets, we can. So we can put a windrow down the avenue and leave it, and you still got twenty feet on your side. So we're more fortunate than many communities because of the width, so we don't have to panic as much about moving. And you saw that with this snowfall, some of that stuff sat for ten days, two weeks. And so, yeah, some of it just got moved yesterday and today, no question. So some of it did sit, but I, I, I agree, we were probably twenty-four hours delayed on that response.
So, next year, next snowfall, we have contingency in order not to fall into the same...
I was just gonna simply start praying the snowfalls are only during the week and not during holidays, that's what's gonna be my first line of defense, 'cause they're always on weekends and holidays.
Honestly, people that think we have a bad here should just go to our neighboring communities to the east and see what's happening. They don't move the snow in nearly like we move the snow in Lesbridge.
Well, I went to Lesbridge and went on Side Street, and it was very treacherous and miserable, and I appreciate that the condition of...
Our guys wanna do it, they wanna move it, they think it's an important service, and I agree. I just think on this one, which happened to be the first one that, in this sense, the election, we were twenty-four hours late.
What's the problem with having outside contractors?
Councillor Barnes, Councillor Brown?
So, did our big auger, did it break down? It broke down earlier, it got fixed.
Yeah.
Then it broke down again.
Last week, yeah.
So that it broke down again, has it gotten fixed now?
It's, I think today it did, yeah. And again, because we weren't getting any snow, we didn't, it wasn't a pressing issue, they've just been out moving it like they used to with the loaders, just picking it up and dumping in the trucks like they used to.
Right, but nothing moves it like that does.
Oh, no, not at all, not at all.
So now, we're up and running?
I couldn't guarantee that until I asked tomorrow. They were waiting for a fuel pump on it, is what they were waiting for today, it was coming out of Washington.
Cause I've been getting phone calls on, is it done yet? Is it ready?
You know, what's interesting, we had more, I will tell you in the office, I would say we had more complaints about people complaining about the windrows not moved than the roads not being plowed. And so, my discussion was, we don't have a priority to move it, we simply have a priority to get it up off the street so that the travel path is open.
Right.
But we don't need to move it ever. It could sit there all winter like it used to. Some of you will recall that, Councillor Banbury, I know when I first moved into that house up there, you have a windrow on the side of the road for the winter.
Absolutely.
That's what it was. You plowed out the driveway and the windrows sat there.
Which been, we've been spoiled.
So now there's this expectation that that stuff's gonna be gone like twenty minutes after it's put up in the rubble.
Uh, Councillor Barnes, and then I would like to ask something.
Couple things. Of course, one is, are our guys, are they concerned that we're bringing outside workers?
No, not at all, it's just a cost thing, right? If they could be handled internally, they'd like to do that, yeah.
Okay. The other thing is, maybe we need to do a little bit of education like they do in some of the eastern provinces down in Quebec, they're always pumping people that they're gonna give them a ticket if they don't have good snow tires on their vehicles. I don't know how many times I helped people put, helped push people, people are so reluctant to get snow tires, and they're, they think, well, we got all-season tires. They're no good in that kind of weather. They'll just sit there and they'll spin. And so, they need to have good grips on their tires.
I have that and I got stuck.
Well, I know, you can, but it's a lot better.
We, we do laugh a bit in the office, or we'll get a call from someone saying, you know, I can't get out of my driver, what are you driving? Driving like an eighty-three and quarter with ball tires. Ah, so that'll do it.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I understand, I'm working on a four-wheel drive truck.
I have Mr. Lance's snow tire.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's tricky, and welcome to, uh, snow removal. You will never be right on snow removal or skid row control when you scare your head in.
So, here is one for you and then Councillor Self. I just had someone telling me that one o'clock goes, is Volker's there, on ninth?
Okay, yeah.
And then, they clean that whole avenue, but then it joins the town avenue. They're blocking this, the exit. So, how do we deal with that?
We clean it constantly, we clean the sidewalk constantly, we clean Main Street out constantly. It's one of those things, Volker is speed plows and they just chuck it to the side, and it creates a rope, well, not far from where you live. You look at the drifts you get just coming off of First into the streets, that gets pretty bad.
Okay, so people who live in those intersections now need to exit Russo's intersection. There is now a path of, now that. So, what is those people to do? There was an elderly lady with a car trying to get through, got stuck. So now what?
What? And she can go down the avenue to Main Street and get out.
But she didn't.
I, I understand that, but, I mean, we've actually had someone that bought us the company, asked for a avenue to take a detour, but that's not sure.
What, what, should we maybe, should we maybe, uh, let those people know, please do not use that exit in the wintertime after the floor is gone through?
And again, it's all timing, because a lot of times, we, we have a little tractor that they'll sit, you'll see them, they go up and down all of the Highway Five to clean, 'cause they get a six feet of snow on that sidewalk. So we send a tractor up to try and clear that sidewalk off, and where they can, they'll try and push those intersections when they go by. If it's two in the morning, nope, we're not there, that's true, that's true.
No, I mean, that was during the day, that was... Anyways, that was, that was an issue that came to my ear, then I was thinking, I don't have the answer honestly at all.
Do they have to go around?
Yeah, okay. Councillor Self?
So...
Councillor Coe, Councillor Banbury, Councillor Brown?
This is go around the table.
So, Geoff, was there also, and maybe I'm, I'll hold on to this, was there a scheduling issue too, where there was a lot of people off on holidays?
Yeah.
So is there, is there sort of like a rule of thumb, or how it was?
Yeah, it's, it was, how would I, how would I summarize it? It's too much leniency on Christmas time vacation. Right, no question. So it's on my list of things to address so far when he's back, that simply, now, to the guy's credit, like, once I called, Lenarke was here, Mary was here, like, they were all here, it was fine.
Yeah.
You know, I called and said, look, guys, we need help, great work, and they worked for three straight days.
Is that possible, then, to have a scheduling with a caveat?
Yeah.
In case of need, we want you at...
And that's why, again, it was kind of delayed twenty-four hours more than it needed to be, because it kind of took me calling and saying, somebody needs to get off vacation, get here, we just have to.
Yeah, maybe that needs to be...
The guys who were on were trying to cover it, but it simply wasn't happening.
Maybe it should be, holidays, okay, but if we need you, we need you.
Yeah, and again, once called, they were great, they've been in, and, and, just so you know, too, like, Lenarke came in for all up until Christmas, came in all between Christmas and New Year's, when he was booked on vacation, so he's gonna take it in January. That guy just told him to plan on it, that's fine, we'll, we'll make it work, right? But yes, there was a scheduling piece to that, too, for sure.
Councillor Coe?
Yeah, just a question, the sidewalk running along the bridge, for one towards, who's in charge to keep it up here now?
So, Public Works usually does that, and again, where they were just trying to get all this done, and I, and I had a couple guys sick. I had a couple guys that were just under the weather, so it's clear now, obviously, the weather's better.
It is, I drove by there, it's all clear.
And I actually had somebody check that for sure before it got cold again, and everything was a hundred percent. I know there was some concern with that on Facebook, um, it, between the flu and some scheduling. My guy that would normally do that...
So generally, Public Works will do that.
Yeah, they'll send guys down and do the crosswalk areas that jut out, and the bridges. And in fact, we have a snow blower just for the bridge.
Yeah, I know, we've all done it today, so...
Yeah.
Councillor Banbury?
Two things, Geoff. I brought up last year, how they plow through the intersection?
That on the...
If they would, if they would plow to the end of the, end of the intersection, and not, so you don't have to go all the way around and come back in.
We didn't have too many of those for very long.
Tell you that, done that this year.
We, we had that on, on, on my, on my street, and that's a very busy street, people going to the temple, so they had to go up and turn and go around.
Right, but, but maybe for a day?
No, it lasted there for, in fact, they just did the windrow down the way street to, yesterday.
Right, but, but that was open for quite a while before that.
But the, but the intersections, they, you know, I, I can see implying, but if they would just stop at the, at the edge of the intersection and not plow through it, you know, that's...
Well, that done that up on the, this side of the intersection, right, so I appreciate that.
And then, and then also, I really liked the bright orange spray paint on the animals.
Yeah, that really helped.
Yeah, and if we, even if we had some flags or something like that, we need to identify that and make sure, because I've seen a lot of people, you know, running to the end of those windrows.
One of those we had, it was, this is a bit of an anecdote, it was one of my staff hit one, just went right up one. So what were you doing? He says, actually, my windshield was totally frosted. Okay, so...
You know, when it's bright on, when it's bright, when it's bright light on.
You can't see your windshield those.
Yeah, so you know, some of that too.
So, actually, my question is from the Ag, Ag Society, so, snow removal out there at the Agro Dome.
Yeah.
So, the road going in front of the Agro Dome, that is...
So Twelfth, yeah.
Exactly, so, we take care of that.
Correct.
The question is, um, the Agro Dome has been paying Frank Bevins...
Yeah.
To come in and do a swipe, just essentially, two swipes, and it's seventy-five dollars per hour, or something like that, to come in and swipe and clear away for them. Their question, and they've been paying for it.
Yeah.
Their question to me to bring to council was, can the town, when they're taking care of that road, not just pull a swipe in there so it's cleared, so they don't have to pay for that?
Ironically, Frank did twelve for us in his last November.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah, I had him come out, do anything with the animals.
Right. They just, they just questioned because the graders going by, it could just turn in and do a swipe, it's...
So, where it's a town facility, I, I suppose we can help out, the difficulty we get is Don Williams wants to know if we can do that, so does Merlin, so that, you know, you can start to get a lot of those, Alan Stacey, and can you just come by here right there? It can compound...
But that's our town property, isn't it?
But I get that it's our property.
Yeah.
If there's an event especially, I can see us doing that.
That's the only time they're doing it, is when there's an event. Other than that, they have a, they have a...
A tractor.
Yeah, a tractor and they plow the way, but they've been having events, and so, they would rather not spend the money because they're tight on it, and so...
I think if they just keep in touch with the shop guys when they have events, I don't see what we can't help them.
Is that okay? Okay, don't tell them to do that, thank you.
All right. Well, it's a snow removal issue, it's over, thank you, Geoff. All right, and...
We'll discuss it again, I'm sure.
Okay.